Became a board member, we got, we were invited to the Golden Bell Award. And we saw Mr. Collins and I was able to meet him there. We were able to see the great things that he's doing at Iowa through the ROP program with Baldi View for our engineering program. And it was pretty amazing. And with that, our students have had great success on being accepted to so many amazing colleges around our area and afar, which was pretty neat. So we wanted to recognize him here tonight and also recognize our students. And we wanted to not only give him back his award, Dr. Yarboy. We definitely want to thank Dr. Yarboy and Shelley and the rest of the team that made this happen. But we wanted to give you back your certificate for that. But we also wanted to present you with a certificate from us in recognition of receiving the Golden Bell Award for Career Technical Education from the California School Boards Association in 2022 for the Engineering and Architecture Pathway at Iowa High School. And I definitely wanted to acknowledge the students, but I wanted you to be able to say some things first.
Great, thank you so much. Yeah, so thank you President Shaw and board members. And it's, it's been a really amazing journey. And it's really been a tribute to the joint partnership between Baldi View ROP and Chino Valley Bicycle District in supporting myself and the program and believing in it, giving us the resources. But at the end of the day, this, as great as this is, what's even better is seeing so many of our students sitting down in these seats, partaking in this process, understanding and appreciating, believing in the program, working so hard and now reaping those rewards. And so it's been an incredibly humbling experience. I consider it a blessing every day to be in that classroom and see their faces and share the things with them. And so I'm just honored to be here. And they actually empower me to become a better teacher and mentor. So I really, I'm thankful for them.
Well, thank you. And your passion definitely trickles down to the student success. And without your passionate words making this successful, it would not happen. So we appreciate you and all that you do and the support that's given to you as well. We will acknowledge the students, some of them came here tonight, which we are so grateful to see all your guys' faces here at the board meeting tonight. If you're here, can you please stand so we can applaud you? And I will still read, pause it and make it here tonight with us. So we have Jason Ween. And sorry if I mispronounced your name, please correct me if I say it wrong. Fidelis Okpore, not here, Ethan Cole. Mason Zou. Alejandra Casilla. Delacador. Mira Pungkow. Adrian Romero. Ryan Yu. Elkin Wong. Andres Simic. Ting Zhou. Megan Fernandez. Michael Freel. Christian Ramirez. J.C. Bocka. Sean McDonald. We have Jonathan Dang. David Trin. Nicholas Ramirez. Brandon, excuse me, Brandon Tran Retuta? Daniel Ding. Henry Correa. Chris Lu. Ethan Chow. Aishan and Adam Ji. Benhard Malaya. Hayden Andrade. Vera Yu. Michael Mejia. Kenneth Diego. Jordy Estrada. Samuel Kim. Emma. Ian Santiago. Neil Wang. Nelson Medel. And Tansio Justin. Neil Doraya. Riley Stevens. Carlos Rodriguez. Nicholas Lord. Ashton Wing. Fiona Wu. Sue. Do you guys want to join us for a picture? Thank you guys for all your hard work.
Are they seniors?
Oh.
Yeah, I guess there's things that you can't say if they haven't finalized it yet.
Come on, Mr. Mason.
Oh.
Unfortunately. Just right down there. He's here.
So we can't see the video, they can hear, they can't see.
They're working on it.
Okay, they're working on it. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. We would like to, we're now on to item 1D for staff report. Comprehensive school safety plans. Tonight's report is presented by Mr. Whitney Fields, Director of Risk Management. Mr. Fields?
Good evening, board members, Mr. Superintendent, CVSD community. This evening, we're going to be presenting some information briefly on the comprehensive school safety plans for the benefit of our new board members that may not be familiar with our plans. So we'll start off by giving you an overview of our process and our timeline. Our plans are completed by the school sites by early February, so we can get them to the board for approval before March 1st. So each plan is reviewed by a third party, and we get a lot of assistance from our third party with the facilitation and getting our plans together. Our timeline roughly is between September and February to work on our plans with the principals and the assistant principals. And we make sure that there's workshops that are actually about a handful of workshops that we have through this time to make sure that they're working on the plans and they have the assistance and the support that they need to get their plans completed. So each site's safety, site's safety council is actively participating in putting the plan together. We do have a public meeting that's scheduled for each school site. And the goal of that public meeting is to make sure that the plans present the goals and explain the plan process. Also, the city managers are involved and they actually get some information where they could actually participate and review the plans as well for each of the city jurisdictions. And all of our plans are compliant with ed code and our templates are very uniform and easy to follow. So as far as our administrator responsibility with the plans, it's to provide the training and support to all the stakeholders that are involved, provide sites with updated board policies and procedures, and review the adopted plans to assure that they're in compliance. And again, make sure that we have all the plans done and approved at the school site level prior to March 1st, so we can get them to the board for approval before March 1st. So some of the additions that we had this year, on occasion, we do have to provide some updates to the comprehensive school safety plans per the ed code. So this particular, this year in particular, we had the fire department and the first responders that had consultation, as well as some tactical responses that were added to provide some information in terms of the criminal incidents and the procedures on campus. Our site safety council consists of some representation at the campus level from everywhere, from certificated personnel to our union representation and others that may desire to participate, actively participate and engage in the process with developing the comprehensive school safety plans. They also include the assessment of school safety plans, laws and policies, and identify the strategies and the high level of safety to comply with the safety laws. So as far as our process, the templates and the things that you would generally see in a comprehensive school safety plan are anything from the campus crime to anti-bullying to safe egress and ingress, lockdown procedures, and then existing resources. And those could be new or they could be dated, but one example that we have is our new WITIP program. So our goals for the upcoming year are to make sure that we're improving our social climate with our programs and our people and the physical environment that that's in place, present our plan at public meetings to make sure that we describe our process and present our goals. And of course, our school board, which is what you're doing today, adopts our plans prior to March 1st, and we do that annually. So around this time every year, you'll be charged with making sure that our plans are adopted. So our school district needs to approve our plans as part of our board responsibility. The county office of education approves the county operated school plans. Each school site's plan is available upon review, upon requests. However, the tactical plan is confidential. The board approval shall consent the agenda today and make sure that we get our plan approved. Any questions on our comprehensive school safety plans from the board?
Just real quick, for like drills for active shooters, shooting, how many are there every year?
So generally, we do about four a year, so generally every quarter.
When you're having the public meetings at each site, what kind of participation are we getting from the public in those meetings? Are we, what, what numbers are we getting, do you know?
On the average, not very much. You know, there doesn't seem to be a really, you know, huge interest. So we may get about a dozen at the high school level, maybe half that at the elementary and the middle schools. Mr. Cruz?
Bridge.
Mr. Bridge?
Just very quickly, where I see the safe ingress and egress, I am hoping that that is a result of what we've been able to do through the Measure G money by going through and securing all the, all the sites with a single entry and, and all the funds that we've spent on, on locks for the doors and things like that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so that does include our lockdown hardware and then our single point entry.
Very good, glad to see that in this report, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I have one comment. John and I were able to meet with our Chino Police Department yesterday, and they had very high remarks about you, Mr. Fields and Dr. Enfield. So thank you for working directly with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to item 1E. That's comments from our student representative, Ms. King.
Good evening, Board President Shaw, members of the board and distinguished guests. Happy Thursday and happy late Valentine's Day. I first want to say I apologize for not being at our last board meeting. I had my last league water polo game. Next, I want to give some sport and event updates. Congratulations to Chino High Girls Basketball for making it to CIF semifinals. Semifinal game will be held this Saturday in the new Chino High Gym at 6:00 PM. I hope to see many people from the community there. Congratulations to wrestlers from Chino High and Chino Hills High School for advancing into masters this weekend as well. Congratulations to all other sports and students from other schools who have made it to CIF or just participated in a winter sport. I'm proud of your dedication, as it takes a lot. Also, congrats to all the Golden Bell recipients that were here tonight. Chino Hills High has opened their Sadies to all Iowa students, guest pass is not required. Be sure to get your tickets by last sale, which I believe is tomorrow. Unfortunately, Chino High has had to cancel our Sadies dance. Information on resale, on refunds is to come. Before I move on with the rest of the meeting tonight, I'd like to acknowledge a student from Chino High School and talk about her current situation. Melissa Magania is a senior at Chino High School, and after donating blood at our last blood drive about a month ago, less than a month ago, I think actually, she found out that she had leukemia. In the coming months at Chino, the coming months, us at Chino will be holding fundraisers for Melissa and her family, such as a swimathon, a blood drive, possible bake sale, other fundraisers. Information about these will be coming out possibly by like the end of the meeting today or on the following days and weeks. I'll keep everyone updated on those in the next meetings. Also, make sure you're checking our social media and hopefully like the whole Chino Valley social media, stuff like that on those fundraisers. And also just please keep Melissa in your thoughts and wish her a healthy recovery. Thank you, everyone. I hope you all have a great night and weekend.
Thank you, Ms. King. We're now on to comments from employee representatives. Brenda Walker from ACT. Okay, Dani Hernandez from CSEA. And Barbara Bearden from CHAMP.
Good evening, President Shaw, school board members, Dr. Enfield, cabinet and Chino Valley community. Principals, if you have not done so, consider inviting Evis Cordero, our coordinator at the Parent Engagement Center, to provide a presentation on a menu of topics. Recently, she provided an informational presentation at Eagle Canyon focused on the learning modalities. It was interesting, and the attendees, whether they were in person or virtual, appreciated the topic. We are excited to partner with the Parent Engagement Center to offer more opportunities to work with our community in the future. On another subject, I'd like to remind our community that School Portraits is hosting the Julie Gobin Memorial Hit the Greens for scholarships golf tournament on Monday, March 20th. This is a wonderful opportunity to connect with community members, support School Portraits in their effort to raise money for scholarships, and let's not forget to have fun. In order to make this event successful, School Portraits would appreciate basket donations for the raffle. The raffle raises a majority of the money for the scholarships. Let's support School Portraits and seniors at our high schools. Am I out of time?
No.
Parents, our English learners are currently taking their English language proficiency assessments, and fifth graders are participating in physical fitness testing. You can support them by ensuring they get plenty of rest, eat a good breakfast, including protein, and start the morning by getting them to school on time. By following these simple suggestions, we can set our students up for success. I hope you all enjoy your long weekend. Monday is a school holiday for President's Day. CVSD, you get three days to sleep in. Thank you for your time and have a great evening.
Awesome, thank you. We're now on to comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Pat, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items? Speakers, well, speakers will be called in the order the request was received. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Once the board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind that the board typically does not respond to comments during this time on the agenda as it's reserved specifically for comments. Individual members may respond during board member comments at the end. Mr. Cruz, will you please explain the light system?
Speakers, you have three minutes to address the board. Limit remarks to new points. Begin comments at the green light. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. The red light means you, your time is over. Please adjust the microphone as necessary. Please refrain from making comments while speaking or at the podium. And please note the board policy of 1312.1 outlines the procedure for anyone who wishes to file a complaint against an employee.
The first speaker is Albert Van De Stieck, followed by Kathy Gallagher, followed by Rhonda Wallace.
Well, thank you for giving the opportunity to speak tonight, because I'm here just to speak only on one topic, and that's the naming of the new school that's going to be building in the preserve. It should not be named after a person. The trend today is to remove people's names from schools and public buildings. In fact, this last week, in San Marcos, they removed the man who donated millions of dollars off the building in the school. And I've shared with you a summary of the reasons why this is a bad idea. And I don't want to air those reasons in a public thing because I have no desire to damage anyone, especially not any of the friends in the family of the Marinos. But changing your position now will prevent a lot of embarrassment to you and to the families. There's no good reason to destroy someone's reputation, but there is a good reason to not honor Mr. Marino. So please do the honorable thing. We send you a motion and select a name that is not a word person. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Gallagher, followed by Rhonda Wallace, followed by Richard Wales.
Hi, I'm here to speak, my name's Kathy Gallagher, and welcome to all of you board members and audience members and TV people watching. I'm here to speak on Black History Month. I'm here to speak on Black History Month, and I found a new book that was just put out by, it's called Put Your Shoes On and Get Ready. And it's by Raphael Warnock, who is a senator from Georgia. And so for Black History Month, he wrote a book, and I know that some, I'm not going to read the book like some board members. Before Raphael Warnock became a pastor and the first black senator from Georgia, he was a little boy whose father told him to get up, get dressed, put his shoes on and get ready. So that's what he did along every step of his journey, from his work boots to his marching band shoes to his shiny lace ups. Senator Reverend Warnock found the right shoes to fit his feet and carry him to his dreams. So I just wanted to say that I thought it was a really good book, and I could not find it in San Bernardino County, I couldn't find it in Orange County, I had to go to LA County to find it. But it's a really good book, it's motivating, it's Christian based, he's a reverend. He took over Martin Luther King's church, and he also, you know, became a senator. So he, his message is to build yourself up, wear the right shoes, and get to where you're going. So I thought it was very motivational.
Awesome, thank you.
And I'll give the rest of my time to Mr. Monroe, who didn't have time to speak last time.
Thank you. Rhonda Wallace, followed by Richard Wales, followed by Jim Gallagher.
Hi, my name's Rhonda Wallace, and I don't want to age myself, but I've been a substitute teacher in our district for over 20 years. I'm considered an exceptional substitute, and I'm requested by many teachers to sub for them, mainly elementary schools. When I'm in the classroom, I treat it as my own, and I know that the teachers appreciate this. Throughout the years, I've done numerous long-term teaching assignments in, like I said, various elementary schools. I even accepted a long-term assignment while schools were closed during the pandemic, in which I instructed from a portable building by myself the whole time. I, unlike regular teachers, we didn't have an option to stay home, to work from home. When I sub for the day, I instruct according to the teacher's lesson plans. When the day is over, I leave them a note and I walk out the door. My day's done. However, for long-term teaching assignments, the substitute is the teacher for the classroom, and we're responsible for so much more. Additional hours are spent grading papers, planning lessons, doing report cards, holding parent-teacher conferences, planning for open house, attending after-school meetings, and additional meetings with parents for different school, student situations, and just so much more to add to the list. And I don't, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we are doing this for $15 more a day than what we make for regular subs. So it's a little bit more than $2 an hour for minimum 50% of the work. With so much more work and so few additional dollars, it's surprising that any substitute teacher agrees to take on a long-term assignment. I've already been asked to do a long-term, starting this school year for next year, for a teacher that's going to be leaving for maternity leave. And while I enjoy doing long terms and getting to build relationships with my students, I'm seriously considering not accepting this, because it's not worth investing so many additional hours of work for so little compensation. Ooh, I'm running out of time. I'm sure you already know there's a shortage of subs in our district. If you value good substitute teachers and want to keep them, please consider our pay, especially for long-term assignments. When students have multiple substitutes filling in during a teacher's extended leave, it leads to a lack of stability for students. Showing our substitutes that their commitment to long-term assignments is valued would be worthwhile investment in student success.
Thank you.
Richard Wales, followed by Jim Gallagher, followed by Misty.
Good evening. This is specifically for Ms. Shaw and Mr. Monroe. I know that you recently had a field trip to Chino Police Department, and you got an idea of various aspects of that entity. Many months ago, now Corporal Asby gave us a very good presentation about how Chino Hills, or excuse me, Chino PD handles emergencies in our schools. We have yet to hear a single word from Chino Hills Police Department, which is contracted through San Bernardino County Sheriff. We've had an increase in violence, and frankly, it's kind of sad to hear about the resources that CPD has and the resources that don't exist in Chino Hills. The lack of investment that there appears to be in our schools. There is a really bad lack of information flow. Parents in Chino Hills are becoming very concerned because we don't know what's going on in our schools. We've been told that the sheriff does Alice training once a year, which is not the case because I personally know teachers that have been here nearly five years and have never had Alice training. And there have been parents that have tried to contact Chino Hills Police Department to discuss safety issues in our schools, and they have been completely ignored after repeated personal visits, calls and emails. So Ms. Shaw and Mr. Monroe, I know you have a meeting coming up with Chino Hills Police Department. I'd like to ask you, whether it's directly or indirectly, to facilitate the sheriff, Chino Hills Chino Hills PD, coming here and presenting a similar presentation that Officer Asby gave to us and explained how things work. Because parents are becoming more and more concerned that we have no clue on what's going on, but next door, we're well aware of what's going on in Chino. And it looks pretty good from where we're sitting, but not where we're living. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Gallagher, followed by Misty, followed by Byron Gonzalez.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Enfield, staff, and fellow residents, I'm here tonight in the capacity of, on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce. And as you know, our, our local chamber has been doing business with the school district and trying, of course, to show our youth that there's leadership possibilities as well as jobs. We brought them to job fairs, for example. Tomorrow, our chamber members are going to be participating in an event with the Black Student Union over at Ayala High School at their invitation. We're kind of excited about that. But I have a real exciting one to announce. On April sixth, there's going to be our very first Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce Career Day at one of our local elementary schools. And not just high school, but now we're going to elementary. It's going to nurture career exploration. It's going to answer the questions that a lot, that a lot of kids are already positive with. What do you want to be when you grow up? And thinking that far ahead in the future, of course, can be overwhelming for young people, but we're going to actually bring in some vendors, bring in some businesses to talk to the kids, to show them what the possibilities are. So that will be Thursday, April sixth, from twelve to three at Country Springs Elementary School. And we're going to ask our vendors to bring and set up a booth and participate. The Career Day will be for the entire student body of six hundred and twenty students, and we're kind of excited to host that, and of course, asking the Board for your approval and your support. And thank you very much, Superintendent Enfield.
Thank you. Misty, followed by Byron Gonzalez, followed by the final speaker, Crystal.
Good evening. Last night, I was able to attend the SPED meeting through the Family Resource Center, and they discussed transitions for students with disabilities from pre-K to adulthood. And first, I was, I was really disappointed that the notification that we got was literally two days, I think, before. I, I don't know why such short notice. I think that was really poorly planned. It needs to be, um, sent out way earlier, you know? Especially for parents of special-needs kids, lives are a little more hectic, so we need more notice. And then I, as I was sitting there and I'm listening to them, um, talk about these transitions and the parent participation and, um, you know, just kind of what's involved in the transitions and when they are and the regulations and so forth and so on. They finally got to the part where I was most interested in, and that is the transition from, um, as a senior, when, after they've been there for four years till they're twenty-two and beyond, as adults. And they really were focused on the high-functioning students in the district. When I asked, well, how, how does that work with the moderate-to-severe students that are in wheelchairs? You know, they're not going out into the community every day like you're talking about these other students. They're not going on these field trips and going into workplaces and learning how to fold laundry and, you know, stack shelves and do this and that. So what does that look like for the severe students that are in wheelchairs, don't talk, can't use their hands? And the answer I received basically was, well, that's, you're in the county class. That's a SELPA issue. Let me wash my hands because we're the district. We don't, we don't do anything about that. Really unfortunate. Our kids are forgotten, and especially, you know, this life-after-high-school resource fair. Here you go. This is what you need to do. Go, go talk to them. They're going to help you. Because the district is not helping. The district is not helping. I want to know what happened with the Buddy Program that I brought up months and months and months ago. I got a phone call a few days after, and that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Byron Gonzalez, followed by the final speaker, Crystal.
Hello, guys. Uh, I am gonna, I guess, say some things that are not very, very, um, um, receive, well-received with this audience or any audience generally in California, is that I would suggest that you guys would hesitate to take anything in that would be authored by anyone named Raphael Warnock because he is a cultural Marxist. Uh, he's a Democrat, of course, obviously. He won the Democratic, Democratic nomination in Georgia, and he is actually, he actually supports, uh, critical race theory, who, but he actually, uh, calls it DEI, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion. So again, he does that, and then he also supports, complete, he completely supports transgender surgery for children who are either, uh, above eight years old and until seventeen. That has already happened in, specifically in the Boston Children Hospital, which he fully supports, where, um, if a boy self-identifies as a girl, they chop it off, uh, and then they consider that a, a girl now, as well as women, women who self-identify as boys. Uh, they, uh, they remove the breasts of the women, or the girls that are, of course, under, say, teen. You know, so I would hesitate to, um, get any kind of books within this district, uh, authored by anyone named Raphael Warnock because of what he supports. So that's my, uh, point of view, and, uh, again, I would like to thank Sonia Shaw, as well as John Monroe and James Na, uh, James Na, as well as Andrew Cruz, to you guys for supporting us, you know? And I hope you continue to protect us from our current administration in California, Sacramento, which is Gavin Newsom. You know, he does support that as well. And I'm not going to be quiet with what, um, what he supports as well. He does support that as well. So, um, he also supports abortion all the way to the end, the day of concept, um, all the way to the end of, of some nine months, which is, I don't support that. Um, and there you go. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The last, the final speaker is Crystal.
Good evening, you guys. I just wanted to come up here and address an issue that I emailed you guys all about last week, um, about my son being physically threatened at school. Obviously, like most parents, we don't take physical threats against our children lightly, especially nowadays with the influence that they have from social media. But first of all, I do want to thank you guys all because I got great responses back from all of you. Thank you, Norm, for connecting me with Luke. Oh, Lordy, I'm going to forget his last name. But he was great. Luke was on it. I had many phone calls with him, so I really appreciate that. But I did want to bring this up here because I do want to talk about disciplinary actions in our schools. Now, I understand there's protocol that you guys have to follow. There's processes that you have to take, but whatever happened to detentions, Saturday schools, had kids having to stay in at, during recess, at lunchtime? There seems to be no disciplinary action at the elementary level. Specifically, I can only speak from the school I'm dealing with, which is my son's school at Liberty Elementary. I know this has been addressed in previous meetings about, um, considering who we are hiring, especially more in these leadership roles. Um, I've had our principal specifically tell me that she's trying to be these kids' friend, which I, I understand that to an extent, but these kids don't need friends. These kids need leadership. They need discipline. They need guidance. They need structure. They need a, a leader, right? To kind of put them in place. Yes, they can still have that friendly atmosphere, but they also need to know that they're going to get in trouble if they do something that they shouldn't be doing, right? Um, it seems to me that people are afraid to take action, especially at the elementary level, because like I was told, well, these are just elementary kids. Okay, but these elementary kids are soon to be junior high and high school kids, right? So these kids are only getting bigger and stronger, and the threats are getting harsher, right? I truly feel that's why we have so much bullying and fights going on at the older levels, because we're not nipping this in the butt and taking action when these kids are younger. Because trust me, if the rules were turned and my son physically threatened to put another kid in the hospital, he would be in trouble at home, and I would hope he'd be in trouble at school as well. But that doesn't seem to be the case nowadays. Kids are not getting in trouble. So I'm asking you guys to please just consider cracking down on bullying and threats that are happening, because I don't want to see our schools and our district on the news about a nine-year-old girl getting beat up in buses, or a girl that just two days ago took her life because she got jumped in high school. This has got to stop, and if we don't crack down on disciplinary action now, it's going to get worse, and it terrifies me for my newborn that I have sitting in that stroller over there right now. So you guys are sitting here in the position you are in for a reason, and I truly believe you guys can make a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers. We're now on item one H, Changes and Deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions?
The following changes and deletions are on the agenda. Human Resources, item three E one, Certified Classified Personnel Items, page one sixty-five, Remove Only the Section Appointment Extra Duty. Facilities Planning and Operations, item three D seven, Change Order and Notice of Completion for Bid Number nineteen twenty seventeen F. Chino High School Reconstruction Phase, BP twelve, page eighty-one, Under Amount fifty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-two cents is corrected to be a credit. Item three D nine, Change Order and Notice of Completion for Bid Number nineteen twenty seventeen F. Chino High School Reconstruction Phase One, BP fourteen, page ninety-one, Under Amount forty-four thousand one hundred nine dollars and seventy-three cents is corrected to be a credit. And item three D ten, Notice of Completion for Bid Number nineteen twenty seventeen F. Chino High School Reconstruction Phase, BP fifteen, page ninety-six is pulled from the agenda. No further changes or deletions.
Thank you, Pat. We are now on to this evening's only action item. Item two A one, Resolution twenty, twenty twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to thirty-two, Release of Temporary Certificated Employees. It's recommended that the Board of Education adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, Release of Temporary Certificated Employees, and authorize a superintendent or his, and designate to send notice of release to employees effective with an effective date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Pat, are there any speakers? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. With the second of Cruz? Monroe? Any comments, questions, or discussions?
Yes.
Cruz?
Uh, Dr. Enfield, how many temps are we releasing? And, and are, are they substitutes, or what, what positions do they entail?
Let me give that to, uh, Mr. Rightout. He'll have the, the number on that and the position.
You know, I don't have the exact numbers. I can give you rough numbers by areas. Um, we're probably talking about around ten teachers. Um, it also encompasses, it, what it encompasses is all employees that were hired on a temporary contract in order to replace someone that's out on a leave of absence. So if a teacher was out on a medical leave for the year, we could hire a teacher for that year in order to, to replace them for that year. It also encompasses all, anybody that's on a grant-funded position, and those people were also hired for that year duration as well. Now, that means like a long-term substitute? No, this is not long-term substitutes. This is, it would encompass some teachers, some instructional, or some counselors, intervention counselors, and a few nurses that are all based off of positions that are either grant-funded or that were hired in terms of replacing a teacher that's out on a leave of absence for a duration of time. So they're all people that were hired for a year, pretty much, and they all know that when they take that contract. And the grant most likely gets renewed, and they come back. Usually that's the case? Currently, yes. The, the ones that are under a temporary contract right now, the majority would be yes. So the majority of the ten will come back? Correct. The vast majority of them would come back.
Mr. Bridge?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rightout, for explaining that, because as, as someone who lived this for four and a half years in my former district, uh, temporary, when you, when you sign it, and I was told when I signed it, till the end of the year, or since you were day-to-day, you could be released even before the end if that person decided to come back from leave, leave early. Uh, one of the reasons I went back to Cal Poly, got another credential, and was hired by Chino and came here. Great move for me professionally and personally. Uh, so I'm glad, I'm glad it happened, but I, the other, my other district, and this was, I know I'm dating myself, this was during the Prop thirteen, passage of Prop thirteen, when districts were skittish about hiring prob, probationary teachers, and the fact that they didn't know if they were going to have the funding to keep them. And so I, I wanted to clarify, and I'm glad you did, that these are, are temporary employees. They're not, they're not non-real acts. They're not, they're not probes that we're releasing or anything like that. They're, they're temporaries that knew when they signed, and there's a good chance, if the funding's there, if the position's there, if the student enrollment goes up, and, and they've gotten, you know, good evaluation, they likely will apply and, and be rehired. So they, that's what this is all about. So thank you for letting me explain that.
Thank you. Seeing that there's no more comments?
I have one comment.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cruz.
You mentioned temporary teacher. So what's the difference between a temporary teacher and a long-term sub? I'm just, you, you hire a teacher for the position of somebody that's going to go? So we can hire a temporary teacher if we know the person's going to be out for, usually it's for someone that, in our district, we typically do it for someone that's out for like an ex, an entire year. Um, but they could be coming back at some point in time. Um, a long-term will typically do something that's going to be a shorter-term period, but it's long-term for a substitute, so more than day-to-day. Uh, long-term is defined for us as a substitute as more than ten days in a position in order to get that extra pay. You know, I, I'm in education. I've seen long-term subs take the whole year. That's why, you know, di- districts do different things. That's, that's why, that's why I just want to know the definition between the two, because...
Let me, let me do a little clarif, clarification on a, when, when a teacher asks for a leave of absence, we grant that through the Board. And so they're saying, I'm taking a leave of absence. The Board approves that, and it's for a year long. So we know that, so at that point, we fill that, we backfill that with a temporary contract. The other one is, let's say I'm a teacher, and I come to work, but I get sick, and I have, you know, some disease that puts me out, and then I go on to, then we use a long-term sub.
I get it.
Because we don't know when they're going to come back in that situation. So that's where the long-term and the temporary are a little bit different.
All right, right, I get it now.
Thank you. Any more comments, discussions, questions? Seeing that there's none, we'll go take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Preferential? The motion passes with a vote of four to zero. Uh, three, one, sorry. With prevent, preferential voting yes. We are now on to consent. Pat, are there any speakers on consent items? Board members, do you have any polls? Mr. Bridge?
No polls.
Mr. Cruz?
No polls.
Mr. Monroe?
No polls.
And myself, no polls. For the remainder of the consent, for the consent items, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second on Mr. Bridge. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Preferential? The motion passes with a vote of four, zero. With preferen, preferential voting yes. Okay, we're on, now on to item on communications. Mr. Bridge?
Yes, thank you. Just a, a couple of things, uh, from my notes. Last night, I attended the Chino Hills Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, and, uh, the discussion included an update on the formation of a teen advisory board. and policies that will go before the City Council at its March meeting. And I wanted to explain a couple of things from, from my notes, because I think it's important, and I'm glad our student rep is here, that she can hopefully pass the word on to those schools in Chino Hills for this. They are going to be seeking student involvement from Chino Hills Junior Highs and high schools for this advisory commission. They're gonna be accepting applications in, in March. They also hope to do a marketing blitz, school campus visits, city and social media outlets, city website and flyers, and they're going to do the application and interview selections in, in May for next year. The qualifications are, you have to be a, a student in Chino Hills, grade seven through twelve. And I would like to see us get the word out, not only through our student rep, but through those school sites to get as many applications as we can. And I think it's gonna be very helpful for, for the Parks and Rec Commission to have student involvement. There, if you live over in that area, you know there are a lot of opportunities for parks and, and I think, and all kinds of recreation. They had a big discussion on the resurfacing of Grand Avenue Park Roller, Roller Hockey and, and pickleball courts last night. So, I think anytime we can get student involvement in that is a good idea, and I'm, I'm hopeful we'd, we'd follow up on that. Also, I too, and I'm glad it was brought up about the, about the sped meeting yesterday. I stopped by the, the meeting yesterday morning. It wasn't very well attended. I found out about it about the day before. So, I would hope that we would be able to notice things as, as soon as we can and get that out to the community for the information for those parents. And let's see. Couple, oh, and thank you for mentioning the Chino High Girls Basketball Game Saturday night. I noticed last night they'd won. I'm sad the game is Saturday night, because I already have hockey tickets, and so I won't be able to, to go, but I wish them luck. It's the semifinals, and was glad to see that. And finally, I wanted to wish everyone a nice President's Day holiday. If you notice, the district took last Monday off as well for Lincoln's birthday. And a little bit of history behind that, I think it was like over twenty years ago, we did a four-day weekend. Some districts are doing a four-day weekend beginning tomorrow. And I think collectively, almost universally, the people in the entire district, whether it was students, staff, or parents, hated the four-day weekend. And the feedback the calendar committee got was preferred three-day, and that's why we have two three-day weekends, which I don't think anybody wants to go back to, to a four-day weekend. So, that's why, that's why we do that. If you wonder why some districts are probably out tomorrow, and why some districts were in school last Monday, that's their choice with their, with their calendar. So, have a, have a nice three-day weekend, and with that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge. Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, so next week, we have a lot of things going on next week. We have the Student Government Day. I think the art, art festival is next week, too? But it's, it's coming soon, in two weeks. And then Wickman's gonna have their cultural event as well. And, you know, as for, as for you, what you said about leadership, it would be a good idea, Sonia, that maybe it's time to have a comedic appearance that also determine what you just, what you just stated about leadership and, and not tolerate so much, nip things quickly, because I do understand where you're coming from. We do tolerate a lot. And I think we should start examining what she stated. You know, we have to make tough choices. I think she's exactly right. And, and as for you, I apologize. Yeah, I, I get a good feeling for you, that, that you're, you're, you're a good person, you love what you do. Can I just ask you a question? How much, how much is a long-term sub?
Two hundred.
Two hundred, yeah. That's something, I know some districts are paying two fifty for like regular substitutes. It is something to consider, especially her. You can sense that she's been doing this for a long time, and, and she's good at what she does. So...
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, yeah.
Last year, I was supposed to be in a classroom for a couple of weeks, and the teacher never returned. So, I was actually in the classroom longer than the teacher was.
I could tell, yeah. She's very thoughtful. Yeah, I, I do understand what you're saying, yeah. Oh, and self-issues exactly, I, I do agree with that, too. I lost my train of thought. Oh, yeah. Let me just say something. Dr. Enfield, I'd like to propose an action item to rescind the name of Louis Moreno School. Okay. I have very good news. California softly dropped COVID-19 shot mandates for schoolchildren. However, many school districts will try to claim it's a mandate, pressuring parents and children. Remember that mandates are not a law. And also, I've been hearing things that Newsom may do in executive, in executive action to, of no legislation, no voting, to push the COVID-19 on our children July twenty twenty-third. So, that's something to pay attention to this. And also, we have AB six five nine bill to mandate the H P V shot in California for public and private schools. And, you know, President Sonia, you know, is, HPV is a sexual disease, and why are we forcing all, all our kids, you know, if this does get voted in? Why? Why do it, right? And, and knowing the fact that what we've had, you know, the risks, why even think about doing something? We don't trust this system anymore, especially for our children. So, that's something to... I don't know what to think if that thing passes. It better not pass. Okay. I want to be doing this every time at the board meeting, because I think it's important to read, because reading is important for, for our, our children. So... So, we have an author brave every day. And I'll just, just, just like, brave every day. Most kids love hide-and-seek, not Camila. She just wants to hide. Hiding is what Camila does best when she worries. I think this is a great idea, and I want to be doing this every board meeting. And I'm, I'm very fortunate that I have this opportunity to do this. So, this will be donated to Orba Elementary. Thank you.
Are you done, Mr. Cruz?
Oh, yeah, I'm done.
Okay, awesome. Mr. Min, thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Monroe?
Gonna use my added time this week. I, uh... Had quite a few meetings the last couple of weeks. So, President Shaw mentioned we had the opportunity to meet with Chino P D. And, and she had opportunity to tour the facilities, really state-of-the-art crime prevention that they're doing over there, and some firsthand knowledge. So, I hear concerns about the, you know, the, the unique problem that we have in a district is that we service three cities with three different law enforcement agencies. And not all of those agencies, given budgetary item, budgetary capabilities and things, have the same capabilities. And that's one thing that we're gonna begin on, on, on looking at, and how we can bridge that gap, and that every city has those same capabilities. I think it's important to the safety of our children, and I think we have a good model with what Chino P D's doing. And it's just a matter of getting the, the right people together to move that forward. So, we'll continue to, to meet with those that we can and push those efforts and, and see where we can implement things to improve that. Had a great meeting with A C T. I appreciate them reaching out and getting to know them, establishing that relationship, and, and I look forward to doing that with C S E A here in the future, setting a date. I want to thank Glenmead Elementary School, hosted me the other day. It was nice to see the campus. I'll tell you what, the atmosphere there was, was very inviting and, and great to see. I look forward to visiting more campuses, but I was extremely impressed with the, the atmosphere set by the teachers there. So, I had great meetings with them and great discussions on things, and, man, I'm looking forward to great things coming out of Glenmead. And if you live in that area, don't discount that school. I think they've got great leadership there, and, and they're, they're moving in the right direction. And I know that the cabinet here, you guys are, are helping to instrument that, so keep up the good work. Really impressive to see the things that are going on there. I had the opportunity the last couple of weeks, too. I went to Chino Hills High School. Chino Hills High School has a, I mean, our music department in our district, I think district-wide is phenomenal. I think every school just has marching bands and, and ensembles that do fantastic. Chino Hills invited me to come out and see their Drumline Percussion Ensemble, that they go to Ohio every year and compete in the championships. I think last year they took second. They put together a new program this year, and they did kind of a reveal for people, and they invited me to... I, I gotta tell you how impressed I am with those kids and that program, the dedication of the parents and staff, and the amount of hard work that goes in to put in the precision that they do. It's, it's incredible. If you get a chance to see these kids perform, please take the opportunity to do so. Phenomenal job. And I'm looking forward to seeing what they do going forward in the season and, and Ohio as well, as they're, as they're moving to go back there and compete in championships again, so. C I F games, it was fun going around. We had a, a number of teams competing in C I F that made it to quarterfinals, and with Chino coming to the quarterfinals. So, I do want to wish Chino good luck this, this Saturday. Let's keep it going. And I do, I do want to congratulate many of the teams that were knocked out in C I F, but had phenomenal seasons, league championships, that they brought to their schools. It was an impressive run this year by the teams, so looking forward to moving into the new season of sports, so. I continue to put it out there to meet with people. I'm open. I've got a lot of things scheduled, scheduled coming up in the, in the, in the weeks to come. But please, if you have concerns, my ears are open, and I will hand out my cards again afterwards to hear the concerns of the community and, and anybody that wants to share them with me. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe, Mr. Monroe. Superintendent Dr. Enfield?
I have no comments tonight.
Thank you. And then I have mine. I'll make them short and sweet so you all can get home. I, this week, I was able to meet with one of our city council members, Mark Lucio. It's really exciting for me that, that we have a partnership with our city council in Chino and Chino Hills. And a lot of the issues that happen in the school, we also need their support. So, it's really neat when you have a city council member reaching out and asking how they can assist us. So, I'm excited about what we met with, and I'll hopefully be able to inform you soon about what we plan on doing. Also, I just want to give a special congratulations to Hidden Trails. They received in Anaheim today the, the award for the California Distinguished School, which is awesome. So, we congratulate, I congratulate them, as well as this, earlier today, if you were able to see our students be acknowledged along with our passionate teacher, Michael Collins, on our engineering program. I'd like to congratulate all the winter sport athletes. It takes dedication and hard work. Like I said, my kids are athletes, so I see the time and the effort and the late nights and the long enduring practices. But I also want to acknowledge the coaches, because without them, that wouldn't be possible. And we all know a coach's job isn't paid for what they do, and, and I really do appreciate all the hard work and the effort they do for our athletes. Without them, we wouldn't have such great success. Other than that, I'm excited that I got to, with a very open arms, visit the city of Chino Police. I'm looking forward to the Chino Hills field trip that John and I hopefully take soon. It's great to hear when you have feedback from different entities that, you know, your district is doing an awesome job. And I want to, I want to be able to continue to do that and also reach out and, and try to work on things that may kind of need that little gap there. I did listen to some of your things about, well, I listened to all of them, but about, especially the discipline levels. I'll work with Dr. Enfield and kind of see what we can, because I know that there's different things in laws and bills that prevent us from doing certain things, but I'll definitely, at my next meeting with him, work, and, and hopefully we can look at things for that. Other than that, I thank you all for coming. I thank all of our students earlier for coming and their parents. And I now adjourn the regular meeting of Board, Board of Education at seven oh seven P M.